Good evening, everybody. Gonna be a lot of everybody's. Okay. Since we have to do a public hearing on the ordinance 2024-01, I'm going to call the the public hearing to order. We have all six council members are here. This is the ordinance that adopts the town budget and the tax rates for fiscal 25. It is an ordinance, within the ordinance is a summary of the revenue categories anticipated and the expense categories as approved in the budget by the town meeting. This ordinance is is presented and introduced by the council because the state of Maryland requires municipalities to adopt their tax rates and budgets by ordinance. So in fact, as you, we all know, the town meeting has adopted the tax rates and the budget. And this always has to come after that because we don't know exactly the numbers that will go in here. But these are the numbers in the approved budget. As such, the public hearing is, as I've explained to a number of times, is actually not entirely a formality. There could be some discussion about the the ordinance as proposed, but it would be ill advised and generally counterproductive to alter this ordinance in any material way because we are only passing it to meet our state requirements. The timing already is late. We have our taxes are collected by the county and they want to know about how much they prepare those tax bills in time for July 1st, and this is already later than they would like to have it. So that's why this ordinance is here and we must have a public hearing because that's what our process calls for. In fact, probably that's also mandated in our charter and in our state, in the state mandates for the town. So here we are with the ordinance which was introduced and so I will I will open the floor to any comments by council members first. Any comments on the ordinance from a council member? Okay, seeing none, then if anyone is here to speak to the ordinance in the public hearing, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one here for the public hearing, then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing, please, from a council member?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Rob, okay, we'll move on to closing the public hearing. All in favor, please raise your hand. I think I can see all of you, except for Eva. He made their shoes. Very good. All right, so the public hearing is ended and we'll get back to voting on this ordinance in the regular meeting, which we will now move on to, starting. Call it to order. So the first order of business is usually approval of the agenda. But but I have a small note, I in past virtual sessions or other in person, we've had the swearing in of our newly elected town council members. I was sworn in by the clerk of court last week, which I have to be, and now I can swear everybody else in. But I've already sworn them in. I did that separately just to get on with it. So just letting everybody know that Chris and Barbara have both taken their their positions in for three year terms. The council. So that brings us to approval of the agenda. I'm going to show the agenda because there are a few minor modifications have been made. If everyone is seeing that, I'll make it a little bit bigger. The modifications are highlighted yellow from what anybody else may have seen. I've put this updated agenda in the materials folder just half an hour, an hour ago. One is I neglected to put the treasures report on the agenda. So I have stuck that back in, the April treasures report. In addition to which, there is a document that I have prepared, a relit related to the item number six, review of the town annual town meeting, and that is in the documents. The materials folder, I'll be showing that one when we get to that as well. And down under administrative matters, I've added an I. You can read it there. It's written financial policies and procedures to be to be created. Could help to have a B in there. All right, and the other, the last thing is the second, the second one one of the basic recommendations I've listed here is when we get to it, it's because of the length of this meeting, it may be perfect, it may be reasonable to defer it, or we may have handled it in the course of some other some other my mayor's report. Okay, so that's my additions. Any other comments on the agenda? You'll note that under new business, I should have mentioned, is the 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 idea of potentially revising the guidelines on governance of committees. That has come up in various discussions, including from council members. So when we
Join the meeting.
Decide what to do, but in any event, it it it's on the agenda and on the radar. Okay, anybody else can now comment on the agenda? Okay, I need any emotion to approve this agenda, please?
I move, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Second?
I'll second Eva.
Okay, thank you, Eva. No further comments. Let's vote on adopting the agenda. All in favor? Everybody's okay? All right, 6-0, agenda is adopted. All right, so the first item of regular business are public appearances as usual. The council wants to hear public appearances, but we we would like to handle any public appearances related to an item on the agenda when we get there. So I'm going to try and be a little more rigorous. First thing I'm going to do is ask for any public comment when we get to a matter that may may have somebody here to to speak to it. Okay, no public appearances at this point. Then we'll move to the treasurer's report. So Jean is here. If you have any questions concerning the treasurer's report, I will throw it up. And Jean, do you have anything?
No, just to point out to Chris, since he's a new counselor, this report comes out every month and I put notes on key line air light items to help speed up understanding and any potential questions or understanding of the report. And so these notes have been here each month. I add new ones as needed. We're well ahead on. You know, our income is coming in nicely. It's a steady stream at state taxes and county taxes and fees. So it's very reliable. Is the bulk of where money's coming from. But you know, with two months remaining in the year, we're getting close in on our budget. So I don't have any concerns on the income. I don't hear any questions. We can move on to expenses. Also, for kind of edification, we group our expenses in areas or departments, if you want to think of them that way. The executive houses, the, you know, the the town business, the website, records management, that type of thing. The next section being my domain in the software I use for our payroll and our accounting as well as the audit. And so you go down the report, you can see the primary groupings of how the town accounting is organized. I don't have any particular comments to call out in the expenses. As usual, we are well under budget on the expense side. Oftentimes, things are put in the budget because committees would like to do them or plan on doing them, or if it's general town business, we want to have the ability to do that, and it does not always come to fruition. So we tend to be under on expenses year to year. And then at the bottom, you'll see our actual cash balances. And that within the Maryland local government investment pool, I've noted how much of the remaining ARPA, the federal grant funds that we receive for the stormwater work, how much remains? So that that's the end. Unless there are any questions?
This is Chris.
Yeah.
So you say you issue this every month?
Yes.
Is that to all the counselors, or is that on the website, or how do we?
It it's always part of the council meeting package. So you will get access to it ahead of each council meeting, and I do believe it ends up on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Jean? Okay, great. In that case, we need a motion to approve the treasurer's report. Someone?
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve.
I'll second, Mary.
All right, Peter moved, and who seconded somebody?
Mary did, Mary.
Mary did. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the board? Thank you, that's unanimous. All right. Fine, now we move on to the item I've called review of the the annual meeting. And the reason this isn't usually here, but because there were was a little controversy, a few missteps and some consternation, plus some discussion of 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 why the town meeting is at 8:00 PM, can't we hold it some other time? And that I thought it would be useful to do a review. So I have prepared a little, just a summary of a few things that came came to mind. That is not to say that the council shouldn't contribute to this, and we're only going to take council comments at this point. So let me just show my screen. This document is in the materials folder now, and so you can look at it yourself at your leisure. So the first item was determination of a quorum. So I want to note that a past annual town meetings is written here at the when we were at the hall and the three previous online town town meetings. I think it's only three, two, one, two, three, yes. The resident status and voting status were determined upon entry into the meeting, whether sitting at the door of the hall or in the waiting room, by the Board of Supervisors of Elections. That's been the the recent procedure. The start of this year's meeting, however, there was no one doing this. And it came time to get the meeting going. And in order to have the meeting, we require a quorum, which is 50 residents and and registered voters. Well, not necessarily registered voters, but but usually that it's both. And therefore, I ruled that a quorum was present, and that wasn't totally arbitrary. It was based on the fact that there were, I think there were like over 70 named connections. And many of those with visual images, and my inspection suggested that we certainly had well in excess of the required quorum. So I declared, ruled that there was a quorum. I want to note, no one objected to that as which was perfectly reasonable in my mind. All right, we went on further on in the meeting when we took a vote, or I'm forgetting how many votes, we certainly voted on the budget. And at that time, I felt a quorum was present. And once again, no one objected, which would have been a perfect right to say, I I'd like to have a quorum verified. But no one did that, and we took the vote, and the vote was very lopsided, as most of you were there know. So that's my summary of the question of a quorum and the legitimacy of the voting. All right, any anybody have any any comments on this?
No. No.
All right. I'm going to let the public have comments on these, but let me, let's go through all of the really the three areas that I want that I thought to address. Okay, big elephant, and it's in the room and we're we're addressing it. It's not hidden. We clearly, based on what happened, need to improve the application of Robert's Rules of Order procedures. The charter specifies we use those procedures to run the meeting, and that's what we need should do. And as you know, that was not, there was a lot of confusion. And I admit, I mishandled the second to the budget motion that was made originally by Tom Land. All right, so without belaboring that, what can we do to facilitate the use of Robert's Rules of Orders? And two things have come up and been suggested. One is that at the start of the meeting, with that a parliamentarian be assigned. The point of a parliamentarian is here is that they have the last word on procedure. So if anybody questions the procedure, parliamentarian is consulted and they make a ruling. They may or may not be correct. Hopefully, they are correct. But it takes it away from the chair so that any objections to the way the chairs handling the meeting has a, you have recourse. So this seems very sensible. We we used to do this, actually. I recall it being done quite a while ago. But in recent times, there hasn't been really much controversy. Well, maybe I'm wrong. I thought there wasn't terribly things terribly controversial about the way the way the meeting and the order of meeting. But there was certainly on Saturday, and this would be one way of at least trying to avoid those sorts of controversies. Secondly, and I'll, you know, I'll attribute this to Barbara, Barbara Romondo. Oh, no, this is, I'll tribute this. Sorry, the second one was, can I contribute to Dennis Kirschbaum? Is that for the for for everyone at the meeting, it would be a good idea to spend a few minutes reviewing those procedures that are most likely to be used in the meeting. That is, how are motions made? How are amendments made? What is calling the question? And the final voting. Robert's Rules of Order, I have a paperback book. It's about an inch plus thick. And so you can do a lot of things. There are a lot of rules, most of which hopefully we will never ever feel the need to use. All right, so that's at the start of the meeting, and certainly, since I'm going to run the next meeting, we can do these things. The other thing is is what I what what it was Barbara's suggestion and approach, and that is to investigate the Robert's Rules of Order training for everyone in town essentially, but certainly specifically for the mayor, the council, chairs of the commissions, perhaps the chairs of committees, or if they're interested, and any other interested residents. So the question is, how will do that? What it will cost and and who who might do it? And Barbara started to look into that. This is not the time to discuss moving forward. When there's something substantive, we will certainly, I think, move along on that. All right, so this is the improve the application of the procedure or order, having the meeting go in an orderly manner. All right, then there's the more, the more the more difficult, I would say, issue. And that is the time of day and the length of the annual town meeting. So by starting the town meeting at 8:00, it's already late in the evening for for some, I mean, everybody. And then then if the meeting goes two, two and a half hours, which they inevitably do, then people are getting tired. And the business of the meeting that is required has if that was to take excessive amount of time, the meeting would be even worse. So there were suggestions about changing the the time of day. There have been suggestions. Let me just go through what I've written down here. Once again, the council can certainly comment on their thoughts as well as anyone else who cares to comment here. So first point is there's required business for the town meeting. The mayor is supposed to give a state of the town report, which I do. We have to, the meeting must approve the next year's tax rates and budget. And in fact, the election results are reported at the town meeting. So those need to be done. So how much time should be provided for discussing tax rates and budget line items, which was required business? So I put a few things for consideration here. One is that the meeting needs to follow the election. So the election needs to be before the meeting. The election, unlike the town meeting hour, is specifically mandated in our charter. So the charter would need to be altered to to alter the time of the election, which would be the sensible thing to do if you wanted to move the town meeting earlier. Secondly, a quorum must be maintained to approve tax rates and budget. Well, the longer a meeting is, the more the 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 potential for losing a quorum increases. That's not to say it's going to happen, but it needs to be kept in mind. So so when voting or extended debate goes on. Thirdly, the budget preparation process. So the discussion of the budget, while open to any comment, can be shortened, if not significantly, if if one participates, if residents have participated in the budget preparation process. Okay, and that has and will be well publicized. Draft budget is made available as part of at least two meetings where resident input is solicited and accepted. So there's opportunity to say in space to influence the the budget, both in open meeting of the council and prior to that, when the initial budget is is put together, where where our unpaid staff, the committees, ask, you know, look at what they would like to do and propose appropriate budgets. So the the town council in my experience, and as long as I've been mayor, allows as much time for resident input as there is interest in providing input. So once again, we are up against the situation where when we get, before we get to the town meeting, there is lots of opportunity to make input to the the budget. And certainly, by the time you get to the town meeting, you're either satisfied with how things went, recognize the reasons they went that way. If you've listened to to responses recognize the reasons they went that way, if you've listened to, to responses, at least on the things you may be concerned about. Um, or you're unhappy with what happened, in which case, you know, you would consider, um, um, perhaps, if you thought you could influence it, making a comment on it. But the idea is to minimize that because of what I just said about the time constraints of the town meeting. Town meeting can be made longer, I'm, I'm fully agree with that, I'm not saying you can't. But the question is, do you want to and, um, and should it, should it, should there be provision for it to be longer? Okay, so lastly, I do want to comment that historically, there have been very few years with the discussion of the budget and, uh, where there was discussion of the budget. And these have generally addressed increases for specific purposes. When somebody's come and said, look, we, we came up with this, we have this plan, we have, we, we think the, something was, uh, underfunded and so they want to add money. Um, all, very rarely is the town meeting used to object to a, a spending item in recent times, that's an important caveat. All right, now, all of you know, and it was said at the town meeting, that the charter um, holds the council responsible and the mayor to not exceeding the spending allowed in the budget. It also explicitly allows the council to move money around from category to category, um, which is usually done at the very end of the year when something has been overspent and we, we want to make sure the categories aren't, haven't been, uh, over violated. So the council moves the money around and that's, uh, that's a power of the council. And so objections to line items in the budget is an objection to a, a, um, provision for funds explicit. Doesn't mean those funds will be spent. It, if it's not there, it doesn't mean the funds might still be spent anyway. Because there's a variety of ways to spend money on, on things that we forgot about or become more, ha- ha- have a priority as, as a year progresses. All right, so that, that takes care of the, uh, that's all I had to say about the required business for the town meeting. But we all know that, um, well, if the budget isn't taking very long and the state of the town, um, um, report, even when I give it, isn't taking up anywhere near the whole time, what is taking all the time? All right, here's what's taking the time and, um, I'm gonna make, you know, express, just, just indicate why these things are there. So one is the recognitions of volunteers, of accomplishments, of, of milestones, of whatever, from the mayor, from the HP and the, and the, and planning commission. Also, we have the town council reports, which in recent times we spent very little time on. But the point of the town council reports is to have a written summary of activities by the individual committees. I call it our departments, our staff, as well as the work of the town councillors on the town's behalf. You know, when someone is responsible for roads or someone responsible for contracts, someone is responsible for intergovernmental. So you, 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 you get, uh, you, you get a report from this. Um, and I, and that belongs, I believe belongs in, in the annual town meeting. It's not, it hasn't been a time sink, but it is a place where questions can be asked and explanations provided. Um, the, our commissions, which are in our charter, uh, um, and ordinances, also report on the year's activities and they provide a look ahead. I think that's an important thing to do at the town meeting. Um, to, um, to keep everybody informed about what has gone on and what may go on. And lastly, there are presentations in areas deemed of, I, I, I wrote this out. Areas deemed of importance to residents because of ongoing projects and expenditures. I'll say, for example, the elimination of non-native invasives in town and in the woods is one of those. Potential future efforts and expenditures. Stormwater management is an example there, um, um, road plans. Um, and other efforts relating to the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. So we have a comprehensive plan, it recommends that the town move in certain directions. And that's forward thinking, and so to have a presentation on the commercial corner, state and potential for redevelopment is a, is, 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 I think, an appropriate thing for the town meeting. All of these take time and, and go on and there's other examples of what that is. So, so these are the kind of the, the required business and the other business. And, um, it's why the town meeting is, is full of, you know, it faces a, a pretty full schedule. But that's all I have to say. Uh, if, if anybody on the council would like to add to this, reflecting on our, the last town meeting, please.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to reflect. So, to me, this, so this is my fortieth year in Washington Grove. And I think I didn't go to the first, first twenty years, I never went to a meeting, but I have since then. And it is such, as, as we all know, it's such a u- unique opportunity to see democracy in action. You know, we're only called to meet in, in this town meeting once a year. I do not think at all that the issue is the length of the meeting. I think, I think one thing is that if we had met in person, like we have in the past, we, we wouldn't be having this conversation. But I think the issue isn't about the, about the start time. And I'm surprised we haven't discussed that yet.
Someone else care, that, wanna add to this?
Uh, I mean, I'll, I'll just say, as a parent with young kids, I, I find a start time of eight PM with a two and a half hour meeting to be not pleasant and, and probably a deterrent to other people in my position. So, you know, I would be all for changing the, the charter. It seems reasonable that we've just moved voting to earlier in the day and then have the meeting earlier. Um, so I, I mean, that, you know, I, I'm sure you'll find people on either end, but that's, that would be my suggestion.
Yep, this is Barbara, I agree that earlier is better because it does seem like a very late time to start. I think maybe four to six and then have time after that for people to see each other and have the, have the social time. But, um, if we try to really keep the meeting to two hours, um, I think we can do that and, uh, have a very productive meeting.
Someone told me who has been here longer than I, that in the old days, that the town meetings actually would be followed by kind of a social hour with, with some refreshments and stuff. And I think that would be wonderful, just in terms of town community, to be able to have the town meeting and then to be able to be together, kind of in person in a space, if, which would require you be in earlier. Also, someone mentioned, you know, having babysitters or, you know, other things to make it easier for families to attend, you know, whatever time it is, which I think is a great idea as well.
I, I think we did that as recently as, like, the, the last meeting before COVID.
Oh yeah, yeah, that, that, I, almost every meeting in person had a refreshment, you know, period afterwards. If the meeting went late, you know, only if, if some of the people stayed, if a meeting ended earlier, maybe more did. But definitely, um, we're missing that by doing this virtual.
This is.
My beer, yeah, you're missing my beer. Barbara?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say something, now I completely forgot.
All right. Okay, well.
Is it time for questions? I have a questions about some of the things you said.
Um, yeah, what, what I wanted to do, Mary, I didn't mean this to be the end of the discussion. The, this is not, I, I think we should treat this as sort of the opening discussion. We've, we've heard some, some, um, preference for moving the meeting earlier, which is a, we, we may, may, maybe the way to approach it is for actually to propose, we're charter amendment, moving the meeting earlier for at least, if not moving it earlier, at least allowing the council to decide when it will be during the day, rather than have it specified in the charter, uh, it can specify the day, but. So why don't we, um, if I can, uh, can get agreement, we'll, um, we can leave this here. I, I want, I, I think, I, I think a lot of other people will want to comment on this, but maybe in the context, um, of, of, of an actual proposal to, um, make changes would, would be appropriate. So, um, does, does everybody feel all right about that?
Yeah.
Well, why don't we put it in the form of a motion and, and just decide to vote on it after we get feedback? So, um, I mean, I would be happy to move that the, uh, what, what is it? The, the charter refers to the election time, right, not the meeting time. So the, and it says four to seven, is that right? So, I would make a motion that we pursue changing the charter to make the voting one to four. And then after that, we can decide, or, or, no, I'm sorry, uh, twelve to four. Uh, I'm sorry, twelve to three, at the town meeting. This is, this is what happens when you do it off the top of your head, and then the town meeting, four to six. So make that as a motion and then people can comment on that proposal. Rather than just leave it all, well, you know, so I, that, that is my motion. My motion is that we move to, that we take steps to amend the town charter, to have the voting from twelve to three and, uh, separately have the meeting from four to six.
I would second that.
Okay. Fine, so that, that's been moved, do, do we have any comments on that motion?
Well, I don't know, do you, is there an hour, is an hour enough time?
The, uh, let me just comment on that, this is a motion with some specifics. But that, but, but it still need, you, to do a charter amendment, you actually have to have real language. Real, real detailed proposal, and I think what Barbara's saying is, uh, well, let's outline it with this, but it doesn't have to be exactly this, it could be some, some variation, um, which, which makes the most sense to everybody, I mean. So just by, by passing this, it puts the, the, the council is then going to expect itself to come up with the language for a charter amendment addressing this.
Would it make sense to, and I don't, I don't know, but would it make sense to have it, um, be something like the council decides the time of, of voting, like, so that we're not locked into the twelve to three? Like that e- each year we can decide what the, the voting time is gonna be?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was suggesting, because it seems, it's very cumbersome to have to change the charter just to change the time of the election on a given day. It may be sufficient to have the council specify when the election will be. The day is, can be left in the charter, will be the second Saturday of, of, of May. But when will have to be, um, decided, you know, annually. Um, okay, those are possibilities, but I think we have, we have Barbara's motion, which is really an intention. Um, la- less specific, I mean, it has some specifics, but like those, you know, it's like any ordinance, you introduce it, you, you, you amended, you, or you amend it before you introduce it, either way. Uh, the discussion can go either way. So just to get it off our plates for this meeting, um, anybody else have a comment about doing things that way? All right, we've got some, uh, some non-council members who would, would like to comment on this motion. As with the council, I'm, I'm gonna try and run these meetings a little bit more rigorously. Um, this may not be taking additional time to address a potential charter amendment that hasn't yet been happened. Um, but instead addressing the intention to oppose it, which is still requires all of a discussion, all the specifics. Maybe inappropriate, but the council can do what you want, we'll, we, we, we can stay here late into the night. Um, so, uh, uh, I'm gonna ask just for a straw, but do you wanna take comments from non, uh, residents, not on the council?
I have just one concern, Barbara. It's, it's by, by why do we have to put down, why do we have to say four to six?
Okay.
Because, because I'm just, my rationale, my reason for that is that when people see four to six, they're gonna go, oh, the council decided four to six. Why, I don't, I'm not gonna like change, rock the boat and ask for it at a different time.
Right.
It's a mindset, yeah.
So the whole purpose of my making a motion was so that we would have something concrete to discuss. So I think that's a legitimate point that you just made, but, so that can, that's something for all of us to consider when it comes time to vote. Maybe we vote it down because we don't like that, or maybe we have an amendment because we like something else. So, but it, it's just the motion.
Why can't we just keep your motion? We could just keep the motion, but not specify any particular time, it's just leave it open that we will decide the time.
So maybe something, a, a way to handle this would be to, um, take comments between now and our next meeting, you know, have it out there, open for comment, have the town councillors think about it. And, you know, we can have conversations with each other, rather than trying to have a big discussion now, because it just came on to the table right now. So that might be a way of handling this.
Peter's just asking that the motion be, that the, 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 the council, the, the council, um, intends to, uh, entertain a charter amendment altering the time for the, 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 um, allowing flexibility for the town election and therefore for the town meeting, annual.
Yes.
All right, well, we had a, shall I be formal about this? The motion maker and the second have to agree to that.
That's fine, I agree to it.
Okay, all right, so we're talking about a more general, without specific times, but, but with, uh, the idea of, of, of changing the time for the election. All right, there's no further discussion, let's move on to a vote, all in favor of Barbara's motion. I see, uh, everybody, I lost Chris in the process, where is he? There he is, okay, all right, good, that's passed, thank you all, um, so.
I assume that means there's no additional discussion from non-town council members.
There'll be plenty of opportunity when this actually comes up. And I think Barbara is right, we, we should, we, we, we're putting out a call for comment on this, on changing the charter specification for the election.
Thank you, I had suggested friendly amendment and you already did it, thank you.
All right, um. Minutes, um, we're a little behind on minutes and, um, I'll have to take responsibility for that. The minutes before the council is that of February twenty seventh, which, um, everyone, I'm sure, has, uh, pretty much forgotten about. I think Barbara offered some amendments, which I didn't add, Barbara, so if, if you remember what they are, you can tell me.
Okay.
Um, not amendments, but, but cor- corrections, um, additions. Um, so if someone will move to inter, uh, to, um, approve the February twenty seventh minutes, um, I'd appreciate that.
I'll move to approve, Eva.
Okay, here it is, and, um, I, I really do apologize, whatever happened to, where did I put your comments, somewhere, probably in February twenty seven?
I, I have them, John, in front of you, so I can tell you what they.
Do you have a second yet?
I'll second it.
All right, Peter's second.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
Uh, okay, I'm, uh, looking, give a second. So on, uh, let's see, page, I guess it's the second page. It says Barbara Raimondo suggested comments be limited to three minutes. Uh, I think prior, I, I'll put it in the chat, is the chat on?
Um, yes.
Okay, let me, uh. It's only to John.
Yeah, to me.
Okay, I'm not seeing a way to, basically what I said is, in response to concerns raised that the meeting would go on too long if everyone spoke, Barbara Raimondo suggested comments be limited to three minutes. I, I can't use the chat, I don't know what's.
I'll just put to 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 limit. The potential time. For uh, 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 potential for uh, potential time for discussion. Yeah. All right.
Okay, then uh, Paul Thorne Kazaya, his name is spelled. T H O R N E.
Where's that?
Kazaya, that is on.
And I didn't.
The last page.
Yes? Say it again?
Yes, uh, so it's T H O R N E. Hyphen Kazaya.
Okay. Yes, I think the reason it's highlighted is because I wasn't sure about its spelling.
Right, and then there was something else um, further up uh, on the second page. It says five presentations Ted Stanky would present. The five presentations were presented by Chaz Wilson. They would, the results of the survey, Ted, as far as I know, did not present. Five presentations, so I think that's what that is supposed to be referring to, that. The five town presentations that Chaz gave.
Um, I'm not finding it, so.
It's under the diversity, equity and inclusion survey results, and then the first bullet is five presentations.
Oh yeah, the five presentations, uh. Oh, there was. That, okay.
They, so that was.
How about that?
She she did, but she did present that was done.
Represented. Yes. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
So John, I have one.
All right. Okay.
So John, John, I have one, just go down a little bit more.
Yep.
Um, next page two, next page, they're all say page two, keep going, keep going. See, okay, so following the paragraph, it begins following the public, it says, uh, they, Councilor Negrod. That, that doesn't make any sense, any sense, so I would just, for simplicity's sake, I would just delete that sentence. Unless unless somebody else thinks it means something, I can't understand it.
Uh, well, I just, I left out the verb, so this is why you guys are supposed to read this.
Yeah.
Counselor Negrod. Uh, proposed. That.
Is that, is that what?
Consideration of this idea be deferred until the next council.
Okay.
And then Christine supported that, and the vote was to take it up with the next meeting. All right, good catch. All right, I'm sorry I didn't do this advance, this is why we do these things in advance, because we're we're checking the. Is is time consuming and generally of low consequence, but nevertheless, nobody wants to have a. You know, bad English written minutes, anything else?
No, just an observation that with all these public comments, I was reading through those, it's very, very confusing. What people are talking about, because there were several topics. And I, you know, I guess, I guess it's good to kind of have it there, but. It's, I I just found it questionable as far as what people were talking about. If somebody's reading that who wasn't at the meeting. But I don't know, I don't know, you know, I don't know what you would do to change that, so.
Well, in this case, it's it's very difficult to do minutes with, they they say.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, it was a lot of.
We do. These days, we actually have a transcript of the meeting. Or video, so anybody who wonders what's going on. And is willing to get the transcript, which is just a written, you know, this is whatever, you know, what what the progression of statements.
Right.
You the video, so we have a way, unlike in the past, of of clarifying and and elaborating. On the minutes.
Right.
And that probably should be part of the minutes, and it may not be yet, I I intended to do that, um, that uh. I do say the the minutes are are here, but now that the videos are available, which is relatively new. Uh, along with the, you know, potentially with the transcripts, I have the transcript, so. Um, we can certainly include that as part of the minutes and ensure that the town retains those for future use. All right.
Hey, John.
Yes?
Um, Joan has had her hand up for about an hour.
Yes, but okay, I'm gonna now ask Joan, what what is it you'd like to address, Joan?
Um, I had my hand up before the motion was even made about the time. I was objecting to the length of time given to the voting. Um, you, first of all, you said you were doing negative votes first, and there was just, there was not even time to go to find. Raise your hand to make a negative vote, and then you asked for positive votes, and of the sixty eight people who were. Sixty eight links that were on, forty four responded. But in the past, if there's been more than one person on a link, there was a second and sometimes a third round of voting, and that didn't happen. So basically, if anybody was on. Two people on one link, one person was denied a vote, and I did put that in the chat, but. And the chat.
Let let me just clarify, the, the um, the, have have. The challenge, the first vote is like a voice vote. So you're asking all in favor, or all opposed, and you hear opposed, opposed, and then all in favor. Uh, and then you hear a chorus of of eyes, so then you, then what what one does in that case, you say my opinion. Being the chair, the motion passes. If somebody was to object to that, being there and not thinking it passed, then you would have to do a actual count. When it comes to an actual count, so there's no count, un- unless, unless it's requested. Then when you do the count, that's when the, you're you're right, the second person there. Um, would have a chance to vote, because they're, that that's their count, but prior to that, the vote is just by, you know, it's a voice vote.
The whole thing happened so fast, I I.
Well, that's a point, yeah, too fast is not good, it should be enough.
I wrote my comments in the uh, chat, which I assumed went to you, but never received any response whatsoever from it, so. I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah.
I would have, I would have voted if I'd had time. I would have voted if I'd had time.
Challenging me. Okay. All right, all, let's go to a vote, all in favor of the uh, the minutes as as amended. Any post? All right, minutes are approved, and I will ma- send out the revised version as I always do. All right, um, now we get to my report. Okay, so I started my report out, first time ever, and it's only because I'm gonna. I'm gonna throw the brickbat at myself, wouldn't normally do this. Um, but uh, clearly, I misapplied Robert's rules of order and not accepting the second. And uh, for that, I uh, I apologize, um, but otherwise, I thought the meeting went well. I, there may be disagreement, this is my opinion. So that's my kudo, I I thought with over seventy town residents. The presenters, I thought we got through a lot of informative um, material, um. Reviewing, reviewing last year, honoring, you know, our volunteers and um. With the uh, the H P C preservation award, et cetera. All right, so the shared use pathway liaison report, it's in the material for anyone to read. Jay wrote an extensive report as to where the where the pathway uh, construction um, process. Um, sets. Um, we uh, we are assured that we haven't seen it, that the actual uh, capital improvement plan for the county. Uh, specifically mentions the Washington Road Connector as being um, um. To be funded under the minor bikeways, um, but uh, uh, line item budget. And meanwhile, we are um, doing what we can to move M C D O T along. The process of additional engineering and um, getting approvals from parks from. Uh, from uh. Who else, dang, I'm forgetting, um, ultimately from W S S C, because there's a a. A um. W S S C easement, uh, which the path would cross, um, et cetera, so that uh, the the planning board. The the proposal has to, oh, and the parks, yeah, the parks, the, the proposal has to. Um, go through a mandatory referral. Um, to the planning board, who will discuss the plan and take public comment. Um, and, but unlikely to do anything negative, although anything is possible. That's targeted by M C D O T for October. All right, stormwater structure, infrastructure maintenance, R F P. Um, you had Patty gave a nice summary of what the uh, what the R F P consisted of. We have since had a walkthrough with uh, four potential bidders. Um, came and walked through to take a look at the uh, the um, existing um. Water, water runoff uh, facilities and what we um. Were looking for in in their proposals, um, so that. Uh, there are several others who are interested in a walkthrough, and I've agreed to do a walkthrough for them as well, which. Would would get us to maybe six bidders, you don't have no bidders until we get a bidder, but this is the process to get to it. The intention of the R F P was to have a have a the bids in by June seventh. There's been a request from at least one of the potential bidders, who is kind of assembling a several. Um, different subcontractors to address the work. That uh, how firm are we that it needs to be done in, by June seventh? And so. Going to, in 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 June, we may end up, um, at the June meeting, we may end up proposing. To um, extend the deadline uh, for the bid, uh. To go to the next step of the bidding process till the July meeting. All right, that's my stormwater infrastructure maintenance.
A quick question, I'm sorry, Peter, um, just, do you have to wait until the June town council meeting? To extend, because if that's the case, all the current bidders will assume that they have to get their proposals in. On the current deadline, is there a different option where you can extend at this meeting, make that decision? And then announce that to all the bidders?
I suppose we could do it that way, I thought we'd written the language so that we could actually do that, um.
But the bidders won't know that, right, so I'm just.
Oh, no, they would, because we um, we've already got a question, so I, the person, the the the. The outfit that thought an extension would be helpful to them, I said, well, please include that as one of your questions. So that all, all of the vendors and the contractors are allowed to ask questions. We then give answers, but everybody sees the answers to everybody's questions, so all the questions get answered. And if one of them, which all, we already have that question, is could it be extended? And if the answer is yes, then they'll all see, they can, they have extra time to.
So could there be then a motion made tonight, so that you can go ahead and just extend it?
So um. All right, um, I don't know when to do that, um, does everybody understand what what Patty threw in there?
I assume I can't make the motion, but the idea.
Be making the discussion.
But I wanted to catch.
But that's a useful, the the point is made. So um, yeah, so I I I I would favor that, uh, if it, if if it's desirable, which it appears to be. I I I kind of waffled a bit. That to to allow an additional month for responses, um, that we should grant it, which would. Mean that the, the uh, the um, the next step in the process, which. I need to re- refresh everybody's memory, memory is, we have the option to interview. The council to interview the contractors. The point being that they're going to submit some concepts for their work, hopefully. Um, not just a bunch of bid amounts, and if they do, then uh, the council. Uh, would be interested in seeing those and questioning, uh, you know, perhaps. Getting clarification on what those, what what the what the proposal is, so we have the option.
What's the deadline for, for committing these funds, is that gonna come up against us if we extend it?
Uh, the deadline is to have a contract to to have committed the funds to spend, to spending, I mean, committed being let out of contracts. By the end of the calendar year, so we're still in good shape. All all of this is to be sure we get the best. You know, the most work done, done in the best way. And um, so man, so that's it, so so why don't you, I I I will offer. Suggestion that the council approve extending the deadline for submissions a month. I I think we should just do that, I I really don't think we're gonna run up against our deadline to.
My motion to extend submissions by one month.
Thank you. Rob? Second, thank you. Any any other discussion about that? All right, all in favor of um, having the submission deadline extended, thank you.
John, I just had one quick question um, for you or Patty. It's just that, so you met with, you met with these, at one point, we were afraid that nobody would even bid on this. And it seems like it's, the bidding, do you get like a woman, did you get like a feel from the contractors about? Um, you did, okay, that's why I was just wondering if they, there was some enthusiasm about this. That's great.
There are some other wrinkles also, um, and which I guess this is the right play, I I need to tell everybody. Um, so it turns out that uh, i- in our charter, but in general. Government entities are generally allowed to um, bypass the bidding process. By piggybacking on contracts that other. Government entities have with contract, with with vendors, because they have gone through the bidding process, and they have selected. Their vendors, and they have um, a a work and a price list as part of the contract. And we have the option of signing on and and using um, somebody else's contract. Um, to get our work done, assuming the vendor is agreeable to doing the work. So um, that has potentially huge advantages, because you don't have to go through. The 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 detailed intervening, you know, parts of the bidding and design. I I'm not gonna say, you know, this is new, it's new to me, I'm sure it's new to almost everybody here. So, but it is a possibility, and several of the uh, several of those interested in doing the work. Do have contracts with the county. Which may well cover the work we we are interested in having done, that is, they've already priced out. Doing swale maintenance, doing bio swales. Um, you know, doing uh, water quality facilities, which is the, you know, we proposed three of those. In in different places, so, so that's possibility that we may yet. Have to, it may be advantageous to entertain, but your, to to your main point is, at least. I would say at least two of the four are almost certain to bid. Maybe all four, and I have two more that just missed that walkthrough.
So, John, despite Budinsky, I I would certainly wait to see what bids you get in. Before you decide if you want to take on that sort of county contractor privilege statement that you just made. I think it would behoove the town to just take a look at what we get in.
Well, the the council has to approve.
That's what I mean, yeah.
So it will definitely not be on my say ever. Okay.
Good to know we have options. I I have.
Bruce Christ, is there opportunity to make a comment?
Uh, okay.
Well, thanks. I appreciate it and appreciate all the effort that's gone into developing this stormwater management proposal. Had is the stormwater management group in developing the proposal or moving forward made an effort to reach out to individuals who own property or live in properties that are adjacent to the infrastructures that are proposed in order that they can get input and provide context and an opinion about what that might do or how it might affect their property as the stormwater management proposal moves forward?
No.
Okay, thank you. Have you been anticipating that that might actually take place?
Yes. Absolutely.
And wouldn't it have been better for it to have taken place before the commitment of the proposal and the different kinds of infrastructure? So you could have gotten insights from individuals of things that might not have been so obvious to those people who are making the proposal, that the individuals could.
All of the work.
Alternatives?
This work is entirely on town property.
I understand.
Which obviously borders on private property. And the the goals of the work are are pretty much driving the whole exercise. And that, you know, nothing, nothing that will be done should negatively impact any but any private property owner.
So just to reiterate, just to reiterate that, John, you've stated that nothing that's going to be done will negatively impact private property owners. Have you thought about things that could be done to positively impact those private property owners?
Of course.
And what were they?
Well, so so that depends on exact on the very specifics of what in fact is done. And what you define as positively impacting. So I'll give you an example. The water flow down, let's use Center Street. Town property extends in, you know, towards private property, and there's no obvious boundary. The the town property doesn't end at the asphalt. It doesn't even end at the shoulder. It ends somewhere else.
Yeah.
And part of Center is wider than the rest of Center and has more asphalt, and that area is used is convenient. It was put there as water runoff, as a water runoff control. It's also convenient for parking, and it sits right in front of somebody's house. Same thing is true on Oak. However, if we want to control, do a better job of controlling runoff, we have been advised that we should install certain kinds of bio swale facilities that would do that, rather than just rushing the water down to the Washington Grove Lane, we could hold up the water and allow more of it to to less of it to leave the town. So to do that, we'd have to convert some of the asphalt swell into a bio swell. So yeah, that's a change in the street. But we haven't committed to doing that. It's.
Sure, I appreciate the explanation. Examples, John, it's it's very kind of you to offer those. I was just expecting to receive more interaction with the group that was developing the proposals as they were developing it, because it's well known that the intersection of Sylvie Fabre's, Stephen Shapenka's, and my property is the recipient of a lot of town runoff.
Bruce, I I think everyone on the town council agrees that town residents' input on projects like these is important. I I would say that this isn't out of the blue, though. The the stormwater management committee has been and we've been discussing these projects at the town council meetings for a long time, for months as well.
Sure, Robin, I appreciate your input on that, and I realize my participation has been low, but we also have reviewed in in depth the inapproachability of many town meetings because of their length and duration and internally long and drawn out and sometimes diffuse directions that make them unapproachable for many people who have otherwise full schedules.
All right, and this may be the appropriate time for me to make a comment, because I'm I personally, and I feel the council should feel the same. There seems to be a trend here in town to address the town in some way, whether it's on the listserv, and now we have this very convenient way to send letters to the mayor and the council, which is a form of communication system, perfectly reasonable for many purposes. But you, with your issues and virtually all other issues, the first thing anybody ought to be doing is talking to one or more of the council members or myself. You know, don't make it a public matter where everybody's going to throw their opinions back and forth when all you want is something to be considered or to happen. Your best way to get that is to come directly to us. If you don't.
John, I've seen by widely searched emails with photographs and of the problem, and that didn't evoke any reaction or contact from anyone on the stormwater management committee that I'm aware of. But I'm sorry, and I also agree that arguing this in a public forum is not good form, and I'm not addressing any one person in particular, but just a general idea that a better job could have been done, and I think I should leave it at that. And thank you. I I also understand your opinions and appreciate the way that things should happen going forward.
Well, Bruce, in your particular case, you definitely should talk to either myself or Patty about options that, based on our work with the attempting to, you know, mitigate our stormwater management, our stormwater flow floodwater issues, that some options that are now much clearer to us that would help private property owners. And, you know, we haven't reached out with those, because we can only do so much in a sequential way. And it's not, we've gotten not gotten to the point where some of these, you know, some promising, some promising approaches can become, you know, might make sense. So so specifically, you should talk to me or Patty.
Yeah, thanks, John. And I wanted to flip on my camera. I'm I completely understand that you're in a kind of in a rock and a hard place. You got a lot of things going. And I will take this opportunity to get with some neighbors and develop an opportunity to specifically talk with you.
Okay.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Sorry to take up everyone's time.
And can I just point out that once we moved into town, Bruce, it was your comments in that situation with Sylvie and your other neighbor and you that really instigated this whole stormwater infrastructure project. So your comments were invaluable in getting this whole thing started. And do you feel, I mean, call me if you feel this doesn't satisfy keeping water from from flooding and backing up in your property? Because that was one of our, that was one of our considerations all along.
Thanks, John, for speaking with you, but I prefer to move forward with John.
Okay. Oh, yes. Yes, certainly. That's the way to go.
Okay, let me, this is the wrong agenda. It always helps to be on the right page.
Hey, hey, John. Before, this is Chris. Before we move on, we were talking about moving the date a month. What's the new due date?
Would be the before probably the the Friday before the July council meeting. You want, I mean, the council meetings are the second Monday of the month unless we make a change. So then in June, that our council meeting is the 10th. Sorry, June, that's we're not talking about June, we want July. July, it's the 8th. So that would make the deadline for submissions the previous Friday, 7/6/5, July 5.
So so.
Or 3rd.
I guess the thing is, is the budget starts, I mean, it ends June 30th, starts July 1st, right?
That's correct. Right. But that 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 doesn't have any impact. We're not letting any contract or anything.
Okay, so.
And the funds are coming out of restricted funds solely for this purpose. There there isn't any any part of our regular expenditures going towards these this project.
Okay, no, it just seemed kind of my part, sorry.
All right. All right. Lastly, on my mayor's report, which was added late in the game. You all may recall that as part of the 150th celebration that Greg English offered to contribute his time and 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 artistic talent to create a poster. We also, the 150th committee also sold a variety of memorabilia. And the committee proposed, and the town council agreed, that profits from all these sale of these would be donated to Heritage Emery Grove, which is an organization that was being chartered to in conjunction with the redevelopment and reimagining of the Emery Grove area. A bunch of housing is going to be going to be altered and redeveloped. And that would take place once they got their nonprofit status. Well, they've gotten their nonprofit status as of a few weeks ago, so we need to move forward with this, with making good on our donation. The amount is Jean's probably left. I've forgotten the amount. It's in the several or $3,000 range.
I mean, I'm John, I'm here, but I I'll have to go dig.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have given you a heads up on this, but whatever it is, we we want to make the donation. It's earmarked for that. And to do that, I'm 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 planning to contact the leaders of the Heritage Emery Grove nonprofit as well as Tim Warner, maybe one of the same. And arrange for this transfer money, perhaps in some presentation form, so that, you know, it'd be a recognition event. Also, I want to meet with him, and this impacts the the last, the other basic recommendation. I wanted to discuss with him a number of other things that that we have currently, perhaps of interest with the Emery Grove community, both related to that renovation and 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 reimagining up there, as well as maybe a few others. So I'm I'm going to be arranging a meeting with just a very few of us and a few of the the people with Heritage Emery Grove to have these discussions. All right. That's the end of my report. But we have a long list of administration matters, and let's see, we can't race right through these, because these are pretty standard for this for this meeting, right after the town meeting. First of all, there's a document in the materials which reviews where the town revenue comes from and all about the town accounts. Chris, it's mostly you're the you're the new 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 man on the on the council, so you'll want to take a look at that in particular, but it doesn't hurt if anybody else needs to refresh their memory. I think it's pretty much up to date, although we created it a few years ago. Next item. We have a new year. We need to elect a mayor pro tem. And that mayor pro tem fills in for the mayor when he's out of town or incapacitated or whatever. And I'm then going to propose that Barbara Romando serve as mayor pro tem. If she's willing to do so, she's told me she's willing to do so. But anyone else can propose someone for mayor pro tem. We'll need a nomination for somebody.
Do you say you need someone to nominate Barbara?
That's correct.
Okay, I will nominate Barbara.
I second it, Mary.
Anybody else interested in this plum position?
Barbara, thank you for your willingness to serve.
She actually had to do it a couple of times, especially once she was somewhere. You weren't in Alaska, but you were somewhere almost in Alaska.
Yeah, I was in Wisconsin.
Because because she was closer than I was. I was in Africa or somewhere, whatever.
The town hall on wheels.
Wasn't Sean, wasn't I pro tem this year for a day?
I I beg your pardon?
I think I was made a pro tem for.
Yes, that's because we have to have somebody actually here in town.
That's right. I told my mom about it.
Who make decisions. And 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 that shows you how slim the pickings were. We had to pick.
That's your day job.
All right, any discussion? All right, let's move to a vote for Barbara as mayor pro tem. Eva raised her hand. Great. All right, looks like unanimous. All right, Barbara, you can update your CV. Right. All right, I got a few more appointments. We also need to appoint the council's representative on the planning commission. Peter came, you know, went moved from being chairman of the planning commission to the council last year, and I proposed that the council continue Peter as a planning commissioner for the coming year. Any discussion? Anybody else want the job? All right. In that case, we have a lot of just the sort of approving the mayor's appointment, if you will. All in favor? Any post? All right, Peter, you're 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 in for another year. We've got a few more of these. We've got appointment of Sung Chang to the planning commission, he as a full member for a five-year term. He's currently the alternate. It looks like, well, Georgette has requested that he be appointed, in spite of the fact that he may be taking a job that will take him away from Washington Grove. I don't know whether that means they're moving or not, but this may happen. But at that time, of course, he will have to resign from the planning commission and will have to find a replacement. But meanwhile, Georgette, who's the chair, requested that he be appointed so that he can participate for as many months as he can. So move, I'm proposing to appoint Sung to the full as a full member from being alternate. Any comments on that? All in favor? All right, Sung's appointed. Now, so now we need a now we need an alternate, and remarkably, Jeff McCreehan has stepped up and is willing to be the alternate. And as you know, the alternate attends the meetings and but only votes if if not all five of the voting members on the commission are there, they then step in and can can vote. So I propose voting him for the five to fill out the five-year term, which started June 1st in 2023 and goes to 2028. Any comments? Objections? All in favor? All right, thanks. Jeff is appointed. All right, next item. It's the start of a new year. There's a document in in the materials that addresses both orientation and ethics training. both orientation and ethics training for municipal officials, MML offers this, there is, it's in connection with I think it's the University of Maryland, but it's available to elected officials. And everyone and all of you are welcome to investigate that. And, 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 and do the, this training as you choose. The OMA training, that's the Open Meetings Act training, is more serious matter because we are required to follow the Open Meeting Act prescriptions as to how to communicate with our constituents. You know, it limits the, it limits having, it specifies that all business must be transactioned in open meetings. That four council members cannot get together in a situation where they discuss any town matters because that constitutes a quorum and other stuff like that. So I recommend, in fact, I, I hope all of you, including myself, will again take the online training course for the OMA. And that's also in the links to that or in the document in your, in the folder. All right, now we come to council responsibilities. I'm not going to make a big deal out of this either because I believe I talked to everyone and and you all saw, I also distributed, I think, the proposed responsibilities, but for anyone who's interested, it's in the, in the folder. It's also, I'm going to show it here and so they there's a few changes. Rob has agreed to become a liaison for RACIC. Where, and Barbara is going to move to the HPC. Christine was doing the woods committee, Eva has agreed to take that on. Press has agreed to do his best to resuscitate the EPSC, which is currently lacking a chairman. This does not make him chairman. The, the, the challenge is to find members to, residents to serve on the committee and they can choose a or we can find a chair. Also, the lighting committee. The Meadow Committee, which may or may not be, become a full pledge committee. It may just be, I mean, they have a limit, a, 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 a a specific interest in, in, in advancing the Meadow and encouraging the parks department to manage the Meadow per the management agreement that we all engaged in back when the Meadow went over to the county for management. And also the hall, so those are the only ones I'm going to, going to point out. Mary is going to do sustainability, thank you, Mary. And that is all I'm going to point out.
I have one, it's kind of like a request, I guess, for Rob. Walkways, really, it would make a lot more sense to put that on the maintenance because I spend a lot of my time with them and it just makes more sense. I don't know, Rob, if, if you want to keep, it's fine, but that's really a maintenance issue.
I'm, I'm happy to swap that and, or, or give that to you if there's something that you'd like to trade. Alternatively, if you want to just fold that in as maintenance coordinator.
Yeah, yeah, keep.
Yeah, I, and John, I noted that the stormwater management committee doesn't have a liaison here. So I'm, I'm happy to do that person. I, I don't.
Not a committee.
Yeah.
There was a committee, is there, is it no?
Yeah, that, that, that's long since they've opted out because it was a very, too big a challenge. So.
So it fell to the woods committee, you're welcome.
Right, the woods committee has, have agreed to basically, I shouldn't say the woods committee. It's Patty and Joe, and maybe Dave goes on also, have, have been, you know, have a sufficient interest in, in stormwater situation in the Westwoods, for sure, to, to help me and the council move ahead on this. So it's not really a committee, we're not.
A working group.
We're not meeting in any sense of the, of, of, of the word, it's mo, it's at the level of me and the council as to how we're proceeding. There, there are other developments I could give you on that, this is not the time to do it. But yeah, so there's no committee, Rob.
Well, and it involved other committees too, right, John? I mean, we had Peter and we had Bob, so I think it was.
Oh yeah, we've drawn people who have.
Or that sort of joint working group thing, okay.
But you want to, you want, if, if Peter wants walkways and Rob's just as happy to give it to him, I'll split roads and walkways. Roads is a contract business.
Yeah.
We can leave that with Rob or take it away.
I'm happy to keep roads because that, that does.
Contracts.
All right, so I'll, I'll make an alteration here. I can do this, it will be a miracle, maybe I can. All right. I'm putting this back here. And all I gotta do is. All right, I don't need to do all that here. Something like, okay. Okay. All right, so that's, everybody's on board with this and me, these are the responsibilities for coming. Thanks, everybody, for working this out. Okay. All right, my next item, administrative item on the agenda is this is just a piece of information for the council that there have been enough, enough enough residents expressing perplexity as to how are the town's finances actually managed? That responsibility, of course, lies with the mayor and the treasurer and anybody else we appoint to do it. And there are very definite procedures that we follow. And we request of anyone spending money or being authorized to spend money. So all of that we can write down so that we'll have something to refer to for when questions come up as to, well, how is the town's spending managed? What is the oversight? Questions like that. So attention is to write up a, a policy and procedures document. All right, lastly, on the administrative list is the comprehensive road work. If we have any hopes of getting this in before, if committing any of the funds before the end of the fiscal year. I had indicated, or I thought that we could merely update some previous bids on segments of roads that had been identified as possibly needing needing work. Turns out that with, with, with one exception, or one and, and a, and a, a partial exception. Most of the areas that really need work aren't those areas, they're new areas and they're limited. So I put that stuff in the in the materials also, if anybody had bothered to look, look at it. So what we're looking at today is I, I just want permission to issue the RFP in the same manner we issued the last one, which was back in 22. And what we did in 22 is, is we agreed with, on a whole bunch of, of road segments that seemed to be good targets for, they're deteriorating. They may go, go, currently need something or they will in the next year. And, and, and get the costs for them. And then actually choose from among those to spend the money, our current funds and on, on those that, for which we have enough money to do and which are the priorities. So those are shown in this map. And this is the map associated with a draft RFP, which I'm going to ask you guys to approve. It's, it's very, the only, the only wrinkle is that there's a specific areas targeted for potential work. It's unlikely we can do all of them. It's most likely that we will just be able to do some, maybe the most, depends which ones they are. But let me just point out where they are. Daylily, Daylily actually appears to be in need of repaving. In addition, the turnaround is very narrow. I forget the name of the, the owners of the end, but they are, have, when trucks turn around there. They have, have been causing some damage. The property owners have made adjustments to, so it doesn't affect anything they've spent effort on. But the repaving could, could potentially enlarge the turnaround to the extent it won't damage the woods or anything else. So Daylily is one. Chestnut Road from McCauley, about halfway down, maybe a little less than halfway down. It's deteriorating, I'm just pointing this out. Johnson Alley, there is a depression has developed in the side of the road, basically. Right where I'm pointing at the end of the road, not at McCauley, but on.
John, are you showing it or something? Because it's not.
I am, but you're not seeing it because I didn't share it, you know, you gotta do these things. Sorry, there is a map.
Ah, there we go.
I apologize. All right, I just pointed out Daylily, pointed out Chestnut Road, little bit of this bit of Johnson Alley. This is the remainder of Acorn Lane, we have repaved all the way down here. Not quite all of this section here, but, 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 but one, one side of it. But otherwise, this, this will complete repaving Acorn Lane. Over on Hickory, the, the at 100 feet or approximately 100, 150 feet up to the turnaround, the dead end, the parking area, whatever you want to call it. The parking area is usable, fine, but it's clearly, you know, suffering deterioration. And the segment of the road is another candidate, as shown here. Okay, Hickory, there, there's some damage at the corners of this intersection, several of the corners. And the intersection probably should be considered for repaving. The road itself is good, going away from the intersection on, all three of these roads are good with, with, in, in those, in that regard. This is also the site of one of the stormwater management RFP work. So we're certainly not going to do it twice, or we're going to be sure and do different things. If, if we choose this one. Up here where Hickory hits railroad. The, 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 the turn from Hickory, right turn, there is, you know, significant degradation of the road. So that should be restored and repaved. I've got this little segment M at Oak and Chestnut, this is where the pavement, there are pavement heaves due to tree roots. And it's not clear we should do anything there, we can do anything there, which wouldn't compromise the tree. But as you will see in this, in this RFP, I have three items I've put in where we, where basically this is going to ask for advice as to what to do about these three locations. One of them was that Johnson Alley depression. One is this Oak Street root damage at, at Chestnut Road. And the last one is Locust Lane, which also has a root heave in the road. In the latter part of the paved portion of Locust, so that's area K. All right, going in very detail, F is part of Grove Road. I, you know, this was bid in 2022, it hasn't suffered much since then. But it's still, this is a, a longer stretch and may be appropriate for repaving. So an updated bid can be sought. Similarly, this segment here on Brown is the, the, the only part of Brown that really has some, some crumbling sections. Nothing that is terribly awful, but potentially going to get worse. So getting a bid on that. So that, that's what this consists of. And the, this RFP basically is just like the 2022 one. Details all of these, these segments and, and, and we'll go out for bid. I will say, hopefully Veers will bid on it because they have proven to be you know, their work here in town has been almost faultless for years. And they take, they, they handle our unusual roads.
John?
Yes.
This afternoon, I had a visit from Jennifer from.
Oh man, why didn't you tell me?
Well, she just showed up. And she showed up to tell me that AB Veers is almost out of business.
Uh-oh.
And she is now working for FO Day.
Oh, man, that's a much bigger outfit.
Yeah, but they're trying to pick up some of the smaller things that have been lost since the pandemic, so. We won't be, we won't be sending a bid to AB Veers, but we will add FO Day. Right?
Wow, okay.
I know.
All right, well, there you go. So whether we can get this work in under the wire for committing it this year. Just so everybody knows, if we commit it, we don't actually have to have written any checks or in fact, the work doesn't have to have been done, we just need to commit to it. Which we did in, in a past year. And, and we can do that again this year, but it will require some, some quick work. In other words, issuing this thing, getting a bid, at least there's something competitive. And, and awarding the contract, so we're going to see if we can't get this done by the end of the fiscal year. All right.
If we don't, John, if we don't bid, the funds flow over.
If we don't bid, the funds will not roll over.
They don't?
And the coming year's funds will be available.
Some of this is, this is grant money, isn't it? Highway, this isn't highway money?
We have a fund, well, Jean's here, she can really explain it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So we receive state money and we have to account every year to the state how that, to what extent that money has been spent. And it's not just roads, it covers snow removal as well. And because we had up until this past winter, virtually no snow removal, we've developed a positive balance according to the state. And so we, we set aside that money. I think you've seen it, Peter, before, I have a schedule that shows the different fund balances that we carry. And so if we have a contract, we can accrue the expense because we're obligated to spend this year's portion. And then we'll be spending kind of both this year's and some of next year's allocation from the state.
Oh, okay, so we do have to get this done, by the way.
We have to get.
I thought it was carrying.
I don't think that's.
Yes, we have to get a contract signed by the end of this fiscal year, John.
Well. We can talk offline on that, I'm, that's not been true in the past, but the money can accrue in that account. I don't know at what point they say, well, how come you're not spending it? But you know, it doesn't take much to spend those funds. I mean, you pay 500 feet of road and you're pretty much $40,000 goes poof. So it's, we, we're not, my point is, we're not accruing that much money. It's not like, oh, they're giving us money and that we're not using it. It's that we're not using it immediately. And, and in the past, we've had a budget, we, I mean, budget, we've carried a balance. And in recent years, recent years being the last, maybe five years ago, the balance has actually been negative. It's accrued back up, as Jean said. Um it's accrued back up, as Jean said. Um but when I was mayor previously in the two thousands, it was positive and we never spent the whole thing. We may have spent the uh uh quote, an accounting. Years' worth of accounting amount, but it carried a significant positive balance from year from for years. Without any question, maybe it's, you know, with what you're suggesting, that's not strictly kosher. Um I I can't speak to that. I assume Mary knew what she was doing, so. Okay, so but but the point is really that uh, you know, we need, we we wanna keep up with our roads. It gets expensive and if we do it. Annually systematically, we 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 won't suddenly be faced by a huge section of roadwork, which will cost. You know, a large amount of money. And I wanna point out to everybody and remind you, I know you probably don't need to be reminded of this, but we have, we were incredibly fortunate. That W S S C dug up Ridge Road. Because they had went and repaved quite a long section of Ridge Road near, you know, uh from Brown. Even the Brown intersection and mu- and earlier, they'd done the far end of Ridge Road and they repaved that too. So we have um, you know, we've gotten the benefit of their uh they're restoring everything to better condition than it was when it started. We can't count on that in on most of our roads going forward. Okay, so um I would like someone to propose um to approve. Uh sending out this RFP with appropriate modifications, nothing that would. Um change uh anything materially from what I've just described to you, but there may be some tees to be crossed and lies to be dotted.
I can, I can propose that we send out uh this RFP. This is Eva.
Thank you, Eva. A second?
Thank you.
Alright, Rob. Anybody have any um um further discussion? Feel free to.
Uh John, just I have a um, so can I clue the bidder to this, or is it?
Sorry?
I have a company that I'd like uh us.
We need, we need all the names we can get. We want.
Good, 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 good.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. We are, that one is, we'll try and move that along. Uh alright. Um now we come to uh the ordinance that we had a public hearing on. So um it's now in front of the council. We've had our public hearing. Do I hear a a motion to adopt?
So moved, Barbara.
Second. Alright, Rob sitting there seconding everything. Um second, um is there any discussion, man, of this motion? Of this ordinance? Alright, all in favor of approving ordinance uh? And Kate by raising her hand, any opposed? Uh ordinance has been adopted. Right. Alright, so now we come to some uh some of the major business, the old business um, which is the RACIC recommendations. And the one uh on the agenda tonight is the recommendation to hire a, the first one on. There's a recommendation to hire a diversity equity inclusion specialist. As you all know, uh uh they they submitted this recommendation back in February. And more recently, in the last week, they've elaborated on with more details as to what sort of. Um what sort of specialists they um would be um would be recommending. For um this uh that if uh to move forward with, so um. I guess uh is Paula here? I see Lynn is here.
I'm I'm here, but Lynn and Chad worked very hard on this recommendation. So questions need to be directed to them and Lynn will speak. I might chime in here and there, but um Lynn will.
Oh, let me ask the council of you, um you you would you like to have Lynn or and or Ted um? Or briefly summarize what the what the state of their per recommendation is? Or do you wanna move right to questions um or comments? Anybody?
I I think it would be helpful um to give them a few minutes to. Briefly summarize it for us.
Okay, then if one of you, Lynn or Ted, could just uh you know summarize the proposal.
Lynn, you're muted.
Muted. Everybody forgets on mute if you sat there so long, you know.
You would think after what, four years?
Yeah, right.
Think, you would think. Um and and by the way, John, it's Chaz, not Tad, who worked on this um with me. Uh so, yeah, uh yeah, let me just recap what this is. So this came off, this recommendation came off. Of the approved town resolution um from May of last year. And there was a important line in that that said that the um town will commit to further engage in individual and collective work. To understand bias. And so um the best place to start and have a productive process of understanding and working. On individual and collective bias is to understand where we are individually and collectively. So we have a starting point. And we um know where we wanna go on our individual and collective inclusion journeys. So in a nutshell, that's what this is. And we are proposing the way to do that to fulfill against the approved town resolution. Is to bring in two uh consultants, and these are diversity, equity, inclusion, access consultants. With two different goals. So the first consultant we are proposing, and you saw information on her. Will um could do the I D I assessment service, which is the largest global diversity assessment um. Tool that uh has been around for decades and it's very effective. And what that does is that gives individuals a sense of where they are on the inclusion spectrum. And there is absolutely no judgment or value. There isn't a right, there isn't a wrong, it just says, here you are. And if you're interested in moving on the inclusion spectrum, here are some thoughts on what you could do and think about if you wanna do that. So that's an individual piece and that's very confidential and personal. So we are proposing that that consultant come in. Do a proof of concept with a relatively small group of town residents, RACIC members. Understand if that worked well, the way we think it will work, and then propose to the town that that be available to more people. The second consultant, so that's the individual, understanding and working on individual bias for the town resolution. The second piece of that town resolution was understanding and agreeing to work on collective bias. So for that one. We are proposing a consultant, um his name is Nawah, and he works for the Intercultural Development Group. And that is the collective assessment and discussion. So he would come in and meet with the town residents. Who out, and this is obviously nothing's being forced on anyone's throat. This is just for interested people, clearly. So um interested town residents who um would like to come to this meeting would come. And Nawah would sort of meet to understand where we were, meet us where we are. And then help us um understand how to evolve as a collective group. On the inclusion scale. And so that's the collective end of the work. And both pieces fit together nicely. They were all driven by the approved town resolution, so they fit together nicely. To accomplish both the individual and the collective bias understanding and growth. Um and you have the costs for the um for that, so I'll I'll pause here, but happy to answer any questions.
Are are they connected in any way, this first um session with individuals? Will they then feed into the community one to help facilitate that, or I'm just trying to understand how how they work?
Mm-hmm, they're completely separate. Nawah has done I D I work, but they are separate organizations. And the people who choose to take the I D I assessment, obviously, they're not sharing, no one's sharing any of that information with anybody. Uh so that will not be obviously shared in the group session. But those same people could clearly come to the group meeting and may choose to share some of the insights that they've learned, but they're separate.
And who would be the individuals that would be doing this? How would you, how do you foresee that? In terms of who would participate, cause it's a limited, limited number of individuals?
Mm-hmm. So I'm thinking with it was that we would have a small group and do a proof of concept. And the estimate that you have covers twenty people for the I D I, so that's both the a prep work meeting. The actual I D I assessment, and then the individual conversation, which it's individual and confidential conversation with. Each of the I D I participants. So that's for twenty people. And we're flexible on on how those twenty people are selected, but we were thinking we start with a proof of concept. With RACIC members um and and others, so it could be. There could be interested town council people who are like, yeah, you know what, I would like to be part of this proof of concept before it gets offered more broadly, but.
And this is really just individuals?
The first one.
Just into selected individuals assessing there.
That's right. The first one, there's two components of the um resolution. One was individual understanding and growth. Uh to avoid bias, and then the second was collective. So Joanna with the I D I is the individual side. And then Nawah with his group meeting is the collective side.
So the proof of concept is the twenty people?
Yeah, that's what we're thinking.
So. Then what? I mean, you're, I don't, it's a, I don't understand what the goal of the of of proof of concept is. I don't know. How that works.
Yeah, okay, so it's to prove that it was effective or not effective, or to optimize at any step along the way. So these folks take it and say, we get together and they say, oh, that was hugely helpful, and I think. The town would really benefit for it, and then we budget that into um the RACIC budget. Uh at the appropriate point.
So, s- so it would be, so the the you the the you're asking for funding for twenty people. And then if you say, oh, we think this is great, th- there's no more money for it.
Well, there wouldn't be any more money probably in this fiscal year, or if everyone thought it was fantastic, there may be opportunities for budget movement, as John said at the start. I don't know, I haven't got through that.
But so, but so basically, if it goes well, you guys are thinking in the future, you would do it more for more.
How can you, how can you have, how can you do this for RACIC? As a proof of concept? Because of course, of course, RACIC is gonna say it's great. That's what they want. You would have to, you would have to find the right twenty people to make this a legitimate um test. And I don't know how you would do that.
Well, I'm sure, two parts of that.
Yeah.
Just the second part first. We could certainly find twenty people within this town who'd wanna take it, so I'm not worried about that, but the.
But who want to take it? That that's the, that's that's the issue, though, is that you, what you wanna do is you wanna get the people. Who need it, right? And so.
But I think, Peter, they're, they're not gonna force anybody to take it. It's always gonna be people who wanna take.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the point, though, is that I'm not sure how effective this can be. Um based on the mindset of the town at this time. I think, I think what you're trying to do is admirable, and I think it's great, but I'm I've been in the training business for forty years. And you know, it's, you know, we don't wanna spend the money on a check the box.
Why is it a check the box? So so this is, we're all on an inclusion journey. Nobody, certainly no one has finished on their inclusion journey. So it's hugely helpful, no matter.
People haven't begun their journey.
Well, wouldn't it be wonderful then if they decided they wanted to? What, I'm fuzzy on what you're saying, Peter.
I'm I'm because, because I I. I think it makes, yeah, I I understand what you're saying, but being in the training business my entire life. Um you know, this is what I've done my entire life, is sell these pro- programs, especially to, you know, to the government and to the corporate, to the corporate world. And it just seems like this is gonna be very, this is gonna be a hard sell for this town.
There's a second piece to that, that we, when we first, when we originally were talking about this. And and Lynn, if you don't mind if I in.
No, no.
Chime in if you want, but um the second piece is that our original idea was that. Um RACIC and the council, who would be interested, the leaders of the town. We would like to encourage the some community leaders to take the training. And RACIC, now we need it as much as anybody else for your own growth and development. But also that if some leaders in the town took it, they would learn some skills. So that we would be more facile in um respectively, respectfully being able to interrupt. Um uh insensitivities um or marginalization actions, marginalizing actions. And that the leaders would prove to be role models. And that hopefully eventually word of mouth and just uh could help encourage other people eventually to take it. So it's not just testing it. It's also the people who first do it, learning from it, and being role models and learning the skills and passing them on.
Yeah, that's what I had thought. The was, the proposal was that it was the initial. Group would be the the town council, the mayor, town employees.
That'd be great.
Maybe heads of um some of the the key town volunteer committees. Um and that's a good cross-section of people with different views and and inclinations. Uh of um. Uh I don't wanna say about R- RACIC specifically, but but I I think different perspectives on the best way to go about. Uh D E I, a- achieving D I goals and and what priorities should be and whatnot. And you were not all uh on the town council and and certainly on the committee heads. Uh of the same mind. I mean, I I I don't mean to say that we we aren't in our own ways. Uh generally, I'd like to think, and I and I do think, you know, knowing who I'm talking about. Committed to the 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 principles, but how that gets, I think people have. Definitely have different perspectives, and it would be good to have a little bit of a a different cross-section of people. In, yeah, it but but at the same time, kind of people, as you said, like community leaders. Um and then that will also help the town council itself. If we've gone through it. Then we can evaluate, you know, and and kind of make the pitch to the people that we represent. Hey. Um Washington Grove, like, we went through this um and we think uh this is really valuable. And we think that an expanded program for anyone who who wants to do it. I mean, I I will say that could get a little pricey, right? I mean, i- i- if if we all thought it was really valuable. It seems like the next step would be making it available to everyone in town, which is, you know, several hundred people, and that's. That's a pretty big budget commitment down the road. This initial amount, you know, a few thousand dollars, uh that's not trump change either, but it's. You know, it's not um. A a huge portion of our budget, but it could be down the road. So that 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 is the only, I don't wanna say misgiving, but um the. And and I, it sounded like several people were were kind of asking, I think maybe Barbara was getting at this, like, what's the next step after this? Um the 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 proof of concept. Um and and maybe we just, you know, figure that out. Next, um but but we should be mindful of, like. If we like this, we wanna, you know, presumably wanna make it available in in fairness, would make it available to everyone in town. But then we'd be paying for that, and that could be tens of thousands of dollars.
And there are uh ways to explore other ways to finance too, that we that we would look at.
Yeah, I imagine there must be, well, I I imagine there could be grants and and uh funding.
Yeah.
Um as we fund our roads and stormwater management projects. And that that would be something that would be good for the RACIC committee to.
Yeah.
Explore.
Yeah, if if we move in that direction, that we would do that.
Can I ask a quick question? I apologize. Let me know. Okay, let me know. I I'll just ask a question.
For sure.
Okay, thanks.
We're we're still working on the council's thoughts, at least at this point. So we've heard from Rob and others. Anybody else have any? Questions?
Yeah, this is Chris. I I do have a question. Uh I actually have several questions, and I guess, you know, being a new kid on the block. Uh I'm still trying to figure out what what this is all about. Um and, you know, and I guess, so I took a look at a lot of the documentation that was on the website and, you know, the um. And in fact, during the uh um candidate's forum, you know, as mentioned. And and I guess the question. A- and I guess the question that I have is, uh with these recommendations, it looks like by looking at the presentation that RACIC provided. Uh the towns back in twenty three. It says the RACIC uh work group developed specific recommendations in part based on survey results and discussions around the survey results. And and let me, let me, I guess, go to this training effort. I- i- is this training essentially because of what results you? Gathered from the surveys?
Well, there were definite, there was definite feedback on the surveys of people feeling. Uncomfortable within the town. And Paula, I don't know if you want to.
I I pulled out some things from the survey. I figured this would come up. Um, the the one question on the survey was, is there. An issue with discrimination or bias in Washington Grove? And almost forty percent said yes, and thirty eight percent said they were unsure. So either way, it sounds like maybe the training would be useful. Um, the majority of the respondents felt like diversity was important, but didn't feel like Washington Grove met those needs. Um. Uh, blah, 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 where's the rest? Uh there in the comment sections, the word clouds. Um, three of them had comments. About they noted discrimination and bias towards outsiders and unfair application of the rules. And they specifically mentioned the soccer field, the lake, and the shared use path conversations. Um, as evidence of that to them. Um, and there was another one. Let me see. Uh, that said that they were interested in defining and discussing DEI. Um, there were also the year before last at the lake, two racial profiling incidents. And um. Let me see, yeah. And and so that was, it was based on some of that amongst other things, but those are some very specific things that pointed to the need. Um, there are a whole lot of ways, you know, I mean, everybody has biases. There are a whole lot of ways to work on them, and RACIC is is um. Right now involved in reckoning with race, which is storytelling of real experiences that have racial issues involved. And that's a soft way that doesn't cost much money that we're dealing with um on making everyone more aware of their biases and talking about it. Um, those have gone very well, but um. I I was a teacher and a counselor, and I know that you have to have different ways to approach learning. Because everybody has different learning styles. So this is one of the other ways.
So so, you know, to continue with that, I guess. Um, a- a- and I and I don't think anybody is disagreeing that training would be good. In fact. You know, it was brought up, you know, um. I know in in uh the corporate world, you know, everybody has to go through some kind of training, be it sexual harassment, you know, equal employment. You know, that type of thing. And 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 so with that said, I guess. You know, and I guess the other question that I have is, by taking a look at the survey, and again, you know, that I brought this up during the the candidates forum. Looking at the survey, uh the census says there's seven hundred people estimate here in in Washington Grove. And there's only a hundred and twenty people that responded. Um, so, you know, you're looking at, you're looking at, you know, seventeen and a half percent of the populace of Washington Grove. And 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 we're developing these training needs. I- i- is it, is it the right kind of training? I guess that's my question. So. Yeah, you know, and to do trial runs with. That kind of money that we're talking about and and wondering if it's if it, you know, if if it's a lead balloon or if it's going to succeed. You know.
First of all, the census is incorrect. The census um includes a larger area than Washington Grove. Secondly, the twenty percent response that we got for the survey is actually considered a very good response.
Right? Before you go there, if that's the case, why did it end up in in your report? And there there's nothing in here that shows a disclaimer to say here's seven hundred, but the survey is wrong, and let me give you some better numbers.
Okay.
Then, you know, the numbers.
I'm telling you that now.
Okay, the numbers are off, is what I'm saying, right?
Uh, well, not really. A twenty percent return rate on a survey is actually a very high rate. And and if people didn't take the survey, they didn't take it, but it's not only the survey that points to the need. I told you about about other racial profiling incidents. And also, you know, there there has been a lot of pushback for a lot of things. Um, and a lot of sensitivity around even discussing. Some of these issues.
No, I I I agree that there's a, you know, a lot of sensitivities and and and, you know, if you. I I'm just, what I'm trying to do is figure out, okay, from a from a project management standpoint, right? I mean, this whole thing is a project. You know, you define a project, you define, you define your your scope of business. Then you go in and you measure it, which you try to do. You collected data. And then you analyze that data. So, you know, that's what your survey was doing, and I'm what I'm getting at is. You know, a hundred and twenty-three people out of a a large, even if it's five hundred.
So are you saying that this training would not be valuable at all? Are you saying that for sure that it would not have?
No, I'm not. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is it may not be the appropriate training. It may not be the appropriate targeted people.
Even but as I said, it's not just a proof of concept. It is also the concept that Pete, some people would be trained. They would pass that information on. They would be role models on how to handle situations. But you're just talking about one part of the training. The second part Lynn talked about is is. Available to everyone, and it's not as high a price tag.
Well, I, it's so, it's so if that's, you know, I don't understand why we need. What I'm getting at is. I- if we're using a survey as uh as the 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 basis for the majority of the recommendations. Right? And and now you're telling me that the some of the numbers in the survey are not right because the census data was wrong or or whatever. The the survey seems to be skewed and 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 you're saying, you know, that people.
The person who did the survey is a statistician.
Well, I'm not saying that the survey.
Knows what she's doing.
I I'm just gonna jump in here because I I think it's been said a couple of times. The the survey is only a little part of it, and I think. One thing that has been made clear to me when Lynn Lynn was talking is that, you know, we passed this resolution. And this is coming from the resolution um that we will work both individually and collectively on our on our biases. Um, so that, so I I understand now why there's the two different groups. Um, and it's, you know, I think the survey is is part of the picture, but I think if we look at the resolution and say, look, we passed this resolution. This is the next step from that. Um, I I I think we're getting in the weeds with the whole survey stuff.
So so I guess the thing is, Eva, if you don't have the appropriate data, how do you know if you're getting the right training? I'm not saying that we don't need the training, right? Uh, you know, I'm not saying that this whole thing is. I'm just questioning. The types of training that we're seeking. And then, when you take a look at the overall cost, you know, I I. Twenty people, if we're doing both training, it's three hundred and fifty dollars a head. And then that's just proof of concept. That's quite expensive for a small town.
Okay. I I think those points have been made. Um. I I'd like to allow Patty's header and that this is not a public comment on. On 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 the proposal. And then Marilyn, I think, would like to say something. So Patty first.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And it's a good conversation. Um, one of my thoughts, too, is, uh, again, no disrespect for the. Interviews you've already conducted and the sort of, you know, looking around for the right type of trainers. But, you know, as a town of Washington Grove, we also have the Maryland Municipal League, and I'm asking whether you have even. Done any outreach to MML because they also may either provide or provide some resources at perhaps a much lower cost. For this type of DEI training. So that is something. Um, I was looking up on the website from my own information and thinking that that should be one thing before any money is committed. Is that we actually turn to other municipalities or the MML to uh understand what they can uh guide us and and offer. Uh, direction for us. That's number one. Uh, number two, real quickly, is uh this Joanna Levy. Again, I was just trying to learn more about her. It is a hundred and ten dollars per person, and I do have some reservations about the town. Expending um money depending on what the selection process is, which has been ill-defined to point. Uh, spending money on an individual situation where people do have personal growth, and I think that's excellent. That's a personal choice. On the other hand, looking at it as an informational meeting where the entire town could attend as a group. That would include leadership, that might actually be certainly worthwhile. But the Joanna Levy person I thought was curious. I I noticed that she's associated, is it with Conservation Nation, Lynn? Does she have a association with your organization?
She was not any longer. I uh I can't remember actually where she is now. But she was trained in IDI, and it's good. IDI is a global system. So the system is set, and the surveys are set, and the questions are set, and the responses are against an enormous database, enormous global database. Um, so it's quite stable. So what you look for is someone to be trained by IDI in that process. They're not impacting. The questions or the responses at all. They are facilitating people through this online. Short, fairly easy IDI training, and then they get a report at the individual gets a report generated by IDI from that. And then, in this case, Joanna would help them understand the report. So. You find somebody who has been trained in IDI and Joanna has been trained in IDI. And then they're local, and it's quite easy, but it's.
I was just worrying a little bit about perceived conflict of interest, that's all. And so.
Oh, she's not with Conservation Nation.
Okay, but whether it's Joanna, I, again, a hundred and ten dollars per person to do your own online, you know. Exam in a way, your train is like Myers-Briggs, and you know, you do it yourself. You just need somebody to help sort of shepherd you through the process. That's still, I think. For the purposes of this conversation, uh, pretty expensive for individuals and only twenty people. And then that opens up the question that hasn't yet been answered. Barbara asked that as well, and others, is what those next steps. My my sense would be you start out with an informational meeting that allows anybody in the town to come, you meet, you make it open. You hopefully, you know, leadership comes, and then you sort of start big picture, and then people might be incentivized to go on and do some personal training. That's that's my thoughts. So thank you for the time, and check out MML.
So I will. Patty, thank you. I will check them out. And the cost is very reasonable when considering what goes into it. So it's the. Uh, a meeting with all of the participants, the twenty people, and how fabulous it would be if it was town council members. So a meeting with everyone, an in-person meeting and to get them prepared for the training. Access into the online training and and all this money goes to IDI, access into the online training. The report that's generated from it, and then these individual half-hour, forty-five-minute conversations to go through the report. So it's reasonable.
Well, again, it's town money, so it's reasonable. If I want to pay for it, that's my choice. If I want to pay a hundred and ten dollars and I want to get some personal training, that's. My choice to do that. I just am a little reluctant to have that cost put on the town when we don't actually know where it's leading us unless you start with. A more holistic approach, as I had suggested. So those are my thoughts, but thank you.
Okay, Marilyn, you're up.
Okay, I I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, what? What if you uh do this and you don't have twenty people who have any interest in taking it?
You only pay for the number of people who take it, so.
Okay. Um. The town seems to be paying a great deal of money to support RACIC. How much is Emery Grove adding to this? Are they underlying any of the cost?
For up for our town residents to understand where they are on the inclusion spectrum?
Well, my my understanding is that there are quite a few uh Emery Grove people who are on the committee.
But no, Emery Grove is absolutely not contributing to Washington Grove's growth um in in inclusion and bias work. Now, why would they?
Why wouldn't they?
Because it's our responsibility.
Interest in in educating us.
It is not their responsibility to educate us or to help us. This is totally our responsibility. We own this, and they've been incredibly gracious. To give their time and energy to help us in our journey.
Okay. Who is sitting judgment on who or what? Is racist? I hear this, okay, if it's perceived to be racist, who's making that decision?
There's no judgment. Certainly in this IDI, there's absolutely no judgment. It's just a a snapshot of where you are individually on the inclusion spectrum, and you can choose to do with. That what you want. And then Nawah in a group setting, uh there will be no judgment. He is. That is n- not what will happen. It was, it will be meeting us where we are and having conversations. So no one would ever call anyone a racist in either one of the IDI or in Nawah's meeting. Certainly.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, um, I also just want to, I want to just put something in perspective here, too, because. I know this is a hot-button topic, but just keep in mind that we do put things in the budget that are not. It of interest to all town residents. I mean, we put money in the budget every year for summer in the parks. And only a very small percentage of people send their kids or grandchildren there. You know, this is something that we're not, it's not something that every town resident is going to go to, but it's for. People who are interested. So I just, I I just want to, I feel like we're really singling this one thing out. And just to keep in mind that, you know, the town pays for a lot of things that are not for every single person in town. So that's all I'll say.
Okay, I would just say.
A very important point, Eva.
But even don't the people who attend Summer in the Parks pay something for that to for that?
Yes.
They pay a tiny, tiny amount.
They pay.
But they do. So that's that's a good point, and maybe that's something that, you know. If the, we do the twenty people and we're like, this would be great for people in town, or I don't know, maybe we do say like. You know, the town is subsidizing this and.
That's interesting.
That's an idea.
Pay it, pay a certain amount like we do with Summer in the Park. So that's that's actually a really good idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And you know, the playground, take a look at what's spent on the playground. I don't have young children. But would I ever not support that? I would always support that.
I don't have the same concerns about Summer in the Park that I have about some of the things I'm seeing and hearing about.
Okay, Joan, you have, I think you're up.
Yeah, uh, um, there's an estimate of cost for um. The IDI person, the individual person, but I don't see any estimate of cost for Nawah's program. What's that?
Oh, it's in there, so let me go down to it. It.
Four thousand.
Four thousand. And that covers all of the pre-work, the in-person meeting, and then importantly, a written document for the town's use. So this would be something that would be shared with everybody, go up on our website, help uh help. Um, further the town, everyone in the town and their understanding, whether you could make it to the meetings or not.
Is there a limit to that number of people who attend that?
No, just space.
I I have a question about the report. Are there samples of the reports that Nawah has written for other municipalities? That we could take a look at?
That's a good idea. I could ask him for the one. He did one for Dubuque. I could see if he could um if there, if it's not, share what's not confidential.
I'm just stuck on. His work was public, though. I thought that's what you just said, that, because like, if he he did a document for us, he said it would be on our website, so. He doesn't do that with other entities?
I'm not sure what the scope of work was with Dubuque, but I can, I can reach out and see if he can send us.
I'm I'm still stuck with the kind of separateness of the individual versus the community, and I would feel better if there was some. Continuity with it, like I see with um Nawah. That um his proposal is that he would meet with select RACIC mon- members to plan the community conversation. It would just seem like if, you know, if you you do um resource training for individuals. It would, it would fit in if they then kind of carried over to, you know, developing the community. The I just, it's hard to just say one totally separate from the other.
Oh, so the people.
You can see them connected.
You're saying, I want to make sure I'm hearing you right, Mary. You're saying the people who took the IDI piece would then be invited in to help.
To help plan the community as as having training and having understanding, and it just kind of. You know, connects the two, so it's not just, okay, these are individuals, but these are individuals who are, you know, finding out about themselves and then taking that knowledge and then helping to develop some community plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so it kind of sits together a little bit more than just, okay, we're gonna check TTs and then, and then this is separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, since you mentioned that, um, I I think the idea of meeting only with RACIC members to plan the community conversation. Is too narrow and I would think that we would have, uh, we would want town council representation in that prior meeting. That first meeting.
Nothing, that'd be great.
Yeah, I I really like the idea that if we, you know, if we do this plan of that the twenty people would be. RACIC committee, uh, council members, you know, like we said, maybe chairs of committees. And then those would be the people that would help plan the, the community meetings. I think that's a great idea.
I'm just gonna say, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I mean, you might have have two. Just different populations, somebody who wants to take that original training and somebody who doesn't, but is a representative of town council. I don't. You know. Next to nothing about the the first training. So to just assume like, oh, well, people get trained and it'll be really great and then they'll go on and do these other things. That may happen and it may not happen. So I would not put too much.
I'm just trying to think of it in terms of kind of what Patty said, in terms of town funds going in into this. You know, we have a goal of where we want to go and it just seems that it makes sense if this is. This is part of it that leads into this so that you kind of have an overview of where where the whole thing is is heading.
But we don't have to approve this, the way, exactly the way it's written. We can approve part of it, not approve another part of it. We can ask for changes. Um, there's been a request to look at other programs. I know Eva asked them to explore another program that she had taken. So, you know, we don't have to just take what's here and approve it or not approve it. We can um. Edit it and modify it to to meet the needs of the town.
Yeah, I guess I, I wonder, are we, are we voting on this tonight or are we discussing it? Okay, because I.
Not, not, that, not from my perspective. I don't think we're anywhere near a vote for on this.
Cause I do like the idea um, that Patty suggested of checking with MML, L, am I getting that acronym right? Yeah, and then, yeah, and I did um, suggest um, a place that I had had a training from. So, you know, I like, I like this as a jumping off point to maybe do some more um, investigating and discussing.
Uh, uh, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I, I don't quite get it because. First of all, this, an RFP is not required. And Lynn and Chad did interview four entities, is that correct? Four different entities already. So, um, there are tons of people who do this work everywhere. You know, I mean, we could, you know, they could look and look and look, but are you saying that you specifically want them to look to see if the price can be reduced? Is that your, is that why you want them to continue to look beyond this four? Is that what you're saying? What's the purpose? And it's not over five thousand, so they don't have.
So, so let me, let me, so if we could, if we could get something for free online versus paid. Why couldn't, you know, so in other words, I think, you know, some of the, some of the comments were, you know, go check out these websites, check out these other training facilities.
We've done that. We've done some of that.
Show the council, right? The research that you've done in order to get to the recommendations and and the selections of the of the training folks. I, I'm still curious, uh, you know, I. Is it the right training? I, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me based on your survey data.
Would be based on the survey data.
Yeah, and training, so we don't use the word training necessarily for this. Because that, there's something almost punitive about that, like you are not where you're supposed to be and you have to be. Trained to get to another place. That is not what this is about.
What, what is it then?
It is about if you are interested in knowing where you are. On the inclusion spectrum, like understanding your bias for the approved town resolution. And evolving on the inclusion spectrum to whatever level and taste feels right to you. Then this will help you in that process and no one will be dragged kicking and screaming into this. So it is really a way for the town to live up to what they agreed to do. I, and I.
I think the town is trying to, or we wouldn't be having this discussion, right? And I think, you know, and 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 I have to say, I really uh, am impressed with the data that was. Analyzed or how it was analyzed in in your survey. I'm just saying that I think uh, from my perspective, there isn't enough data. And in fact, I did not. I did not, and quite a few people did not, participate in the survey and 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 and.
Or the presentations.
You know, and and but the thing is, is if you take a look at some of the questions and and you know, I talked to the mayor about this, you know. Where's the final report? Has he seen it? I don't think he has. Uh, and then to think that it's, it's very confidential, very, so. Who's the, who's the keeper of the keys and how do we?
It is on the website. Everything is there.
Uh, I, all I saw was the survey summary sheets, the presentation. The, are they, is the actual?
It was all presented to the council already and it was all there.
The report, the council. The final report.
So you're talking about the raw data? Is that what you're talking about? The answers?
Just whatever the final report is.
Yeah, cause the final report was what is on the website. It's, it's not the raw data, though.
This presentation, I mean, yes, probably. It says Washington.
Yeah, that's it. That's the final one.
It's, this is the final report.
With the, the interpretations of the people putting the report together.
Okay, because in here, it does say that there's a final report coming.
Maybe it said that at one, in one of the presentations.
I, I'm just saying, this is what I'm pulling off the website and I'm confused. You know, I.
So we, so survey or no survey. We said we would commit to further engage in individual and collective work.
That's what we're trying to do.
Bias. That's what we're trying to do exactly, Chris. And so the only jumping off point for that is to understand where you are for those interested. Understand where you are, so you understand, should you choose to, how you can move forward and.
Are you still doing a study? Is that what it is?
What do you mean?
Well, okay, okay. So again, back to project management. This is a project in my mind, okay? And and then so initially you define, so you outline project goals, project scope of work or business, right? Then you measure by collecting data, current state of the project. And I think that's what the survey was trying to do. Then you analyze, review the data to identify root causes of problems. And and I think that's what you're saying, that this data is showing you with the percentiles. Uh, and then you, you improve, right? Fix or improve the root causes and process. Uh, a- and and that's where you're saying that you're, you selected these individuals to provide this training. It came up with the, you know, a proposal. Um, and and then overall is to, is to, uh, you know, move forward with a controlled process. And, you know, I'm, I guess the question I'm having is, are we, so, so. It's a, it's a crawl, walk and run. And it seems to me that we're still figuring out how to, how to crawl. We. We, we've done a survey and all of a sudden. We're, we're trying to propose money for, for, for individuals who are specific. And, you know, extremely experienced, targeted, right? And and what I'm saying is, there's gotta be generic training or or generic. Uh, awareness programs out there that we should maybe look at.
It's, eh, I, it's not that the IDI is sophisticated, that's not the word you used, but something along those lines. It's not for. This, the IDI assessment is for everybody and anyone. It is not, you don't need to be.
I'm talking about the individuals providing the services.
You're talking about the people who are giving the IDI survey when you say that and the person who's doing the collective group work with us? Is that what you're talking about?
The, the, the two individuals that you're proposing?
Yes.
Yeah.
What about?
What's the question?
Yeah, Chris, I, I'm completely lost. I, I really don't understand what, what you're, the points that you're making.
I, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is, first of all, is I, I, you know, looking. So if we're saying that this presentation is the final report, but somewhere in here it says another report is coming. Uh, and I'll, I'll look it up, you know, if you want and share it with you after this because it's, it's, it's been going on for quite a while, this discussion. But it, are we, are we bringing people in? I, I guess what, the approach that we're taking seems to be. It could be overkill, right? Uh, we don't know. And and I guess we're, we're providing. Big percentages, forty percent of the people in here are biased that they, based on the report. Uh, but is that, is that correct? Um, can we, can we do a, a, a less uh, rigorous. Um, indoctrination effort, you know, that might be available somewhere, cheaper, more. In other words, if you do twenty, twenty people at seven thousand dollars. There's.
It's not twenty for seven thousand. It's that a portion of that is for the IDI.
Okay, so, so whatever it is, and and you even said. During this presentation that you didn't think of the next step of of rolling this out after the concept. So i- if we find it, wow, this is the greatest thing since, you know, sliced bread. How are we gonna pursue this? I, you know, is it gonna be a hundred thousand dollars for for five hundred people in the town that want to take it? And to be inclusive, are we gonna allow non-residents and anybody that, you know, surrounding communities? I, you know, it just, in other words, the focus isn't here. The training, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm questioning the validity of the training. Or or the, uh, I say training, but the validity of the folks coming in to do the work that they want to do. I'm not saying that it's not gonna help us.
Their research about the people who are going to do the train, the work?
Do we, look, if if you go to buy a car. And and, you know, would you buy the most expensive car on the lot? Or would you go with a car that has four wheels that'll get you from point A to point B? That's preference.
We, we spent like, uh, about the same amount of money on like Music Weekend and Blues Tover Fest. I like music and I like beer and I like barrottes, okay? Um, but like, this is pretty serious and we're not spending yet tens and tens of thousands.
You might.
Well, we, we.
We have no.
Uh, on, at, at this stage, like the, the idea, a- as I understand that is being presented, there's two things. There's the four thousand for the, a town-wide meeting. Um, and then there is the two thousand for, uh, you know, and that's up to twenty people. It it may be fewer than that. Um, in which case we would spend less. Uh, and that, that would be for the, the leadership. I mean, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna pretend that I have, have read. Um, every single word of the, the hundred and twenty-page PDF PowerPoint. But like the suggestion that all this stuff is like half-baked or like the RACIC hasn't done its work. I mean, look, if people don't agree with the idea, well, that, that, that was clearly your suggestion, like.
I think this is a great conversation and as Barbara made the proposition. That um, that this uh, uh, matter be, we, we think on it and bring it back. Um, at, at the next council meeting, we can certainly do that in June. It's only three weeks or, uh, two weeks. Three weeks um, away. Um, and um, the. I mean, I, 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 I'm, I, I, I have something to attribute, but I'm not gonna do it until the next time. Um, I think this was a good. Erring of, of concerns. I, uh, I appreciate Lynn, you giving a very clear, very um, complete. Description of what the intent and what these uh, what these uh, contractors would provide. Um, so if, i- unless there's an objection, I propose that we um. We table the matter for tonight and uh, some, I don't mean, uh, uh, not for forever, for tonight. Uh, defer it until the uh, June meeting. We can take it up again, uh, and everybody will have a little additional chance to consider. Any further town input will be welcome, of course. Any objections to that?
No.
There any direction that you want to give uh, RACIC or that work group or?
Excuse me, Paul, I can't quite hear you.
I'm sorry.
What were you suggesting?
I said, do you, uh, uh, do you, are you going to give any more direction to RACIC or is this just time for the council to think about it?
Well, you've heard the, you've, you've heard plenty of comments. So if you'd like to um. You know, refine and elaborate and respond, um, you have a month or not a month, you have three weeks to do that. I mean, that's certainly, you know, I would, uh, that's. Your prerogative to do so.
And can I so also make the suggestion that she brings these details to the RACIC committee itself? We had a meeting Sunday and these details were never mentioned.
But the, the uh, the, the concept of the recommendations was ratified. By the whole committee a long time ago.
Okay, that's a committee matter. I don't want to get into, don't, no committee discussion. All right.
But Paul and Lynn, this was really, this was really helpful in um, and, you know. And hearing what you had to say and I think, um, you know, I think we could fine-tune this a little bit. But I think, yeah, we made some pretty good progress tonight.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, everybody. All right, so, um, if, uh, there is one item of new business that we approved on the agenda. And that is um, um, co- consideration of revision of um. To the resolution um, that uh, that um, provides a govern, govern, advice on the governance of. Uh, the uh, the committees with which the town is essentially doing business. I'm gonna start stating it that way, so everybody understands that um. We have been, we have up till now treated the committees as uh, uh, independent entities. Which um, we contract with effective essentially. Uh, and cooperate with to do lots of the town's um, necessary um. Functions like maintaining the lake and the forest and, uh, the woods and, and beautification, rec, rec events. But we also depend on them for expertise and advice. Um, to wit. The RACIC committee has put forth repo- proposals. This is, uh, you know, suggestions to the town, to the council. On, on the area that they're in. So that this governance document, that's, it's, as we all know. Uh, uh, at least one, the issue of participation of non-residents on committees has been questioned. Or at least um, posed, uh, certainly has posed uh. Problems for some of our residents, uh, and possibly the, the council members as well. Um, it is late, it's approaching ten thirty. Um, I would, any suggestion, any discussion you'd like. To have tonight, we can do, but keep in mind the hour, uh, and then a more, a more um. Appropriate way to approach this would be for a proposed. I, I, I guess I'd call it a new resolution or a modification of the existing resolution. To include whatever um, um. One is seen fit to, to deal with this issue. Um, and then we can have the debate and the discussion in that context. So, um, if anybody has sort of, sort of just in some, some. Uh, opinion or view on moving in this direction, um, it's probably appropriate to, to do that, but uh. You know, I suggest we defer the, an actual, you know, debate or this uh, detailed discussion. W- once a, a mo- a, a resolution is proposed that would provide these updates to the guidance. Anybody want to say anything about this?
This is Barbara. I, I think that's a good way to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, we actually had one of our residents suggest modification to, um, some modifications to the, the resolution. So, um, if, um, if anyone, I'd be happy to, uh, participate in a very small uh, number, uh, effort to, uh, make a, make a proposal that we can introduce, the council can introduce, and then we can have whatever discussion, um, you wish. So, I put that offer out there.
John? This is Barbara. I'll, I'll work on that with you, John.
Thank you.
If you want a non-council member, I'll work with you. Also, question, would it help one way or the other if we brought in a petition showing people's feelings on this?
Uh, petitions are, are you want me to go into the, the petitions or particular vehicle? If, if you petition
Yes or no, it will help or it won't?
It will not help.
Okay, that's what I needed.
Okay. The petition process is, 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 um, um, in my opinion, the petition process is in place to be used in two ways. One, one is to, uh, coerce the town council to handle a matter that they're not handling. You know, the residents think you should be doing this, and we're going to, uh, go through this petition town meeting process to try to get you to do that. Doesn't mean you, it's gonna happen, but that's the way to do it. The other is, reason for the petition purpose is to object to an action of the council. Well, that's obviously doesn't apply here. So I, I, usually the best, in my opinion, the best procedure is to see what the council does, as long as they move along, and you know, keep in mind, the petition process exists as a fallback. Um, should things go awry, um, or whatever.
So your answer was no?
Yeah, my, yes, thank you, Peter.
It's not meant to be punitive, but you actually get, you know, you hear what the town residents are thinking, or they can just contact you directly.
Of course, and that, that's, I mean, clearly by, um, by, um, introducing, uh, you know, revision to our, our governance, uh, I think you, it will, will elicit and, and, um, public input.
And, and the town hasn't been shy about, um, giving their opinion on this.
Yeah.
They have to do it officially, not just on the listserv, if I understand you correctly. So send your comments to
We have a listserv?
Quick plug here for the new mayor and town council at Washington Grove, uh, Maryland.org.
I'm pretty sure Not everybody, but all who want to know. Okay, so, um, if we're gonna move forward on that, then we will come, uh, to the council. Uh, we'll bring, bring to the council a proposed revision, um, in the near future. Possibly as early as, as the June meeting. All right, um, is there any other new business? All right, if not, we're on to what I'm now calling the concluding business, which, which is the next meeting is on June tenth. Uh, I'm back to the Mondays. It will be virtual again. And, um, there, uh, anybody have anything else to say besides a motion to adjourn?
Welcome back, John.
Yeah, wow. All right, now, this was a good meeting, I think. Um, we've got, uh, a lot of stuff. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.